Good evening, everyone. It's Thursday, May 4th. This is the regular session of the Air Shirley Regional School Committee at 6:30. It's now 6:30. I would call the session to order. Before that, I need to announce that those attending tonight's meeting should be aware that the meeting is being audio and video recorded by APEC and ASRSD. I don't know why I get stuck in the middle of that. Any audience members who wish to record any part of the meeting must inform the chair who will announce the recording. This is to comply with the Massachusetts wiretap statute. The listings of the agenda or the listings of matters are reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. If I could ask someone there, Michelle Granger, can you lead the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure.
I don't think I can go from here.
No problem. And the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle Towne, would you do the vote call for us, please?
Mr. Brezlin.
Here.
Mrs. Granger.
Here.
Mr. Quinty.
Here.
Mrs. Reschew.
Here.
Mr. Rupert.
Ms. Fan.
Here.
Is there any public comment tonight?
No.
No, okay. Hearing none, we will move on to number five, the consent agenda. April 4th, 2023, our regular session minutes were released. There was a slight addition correction to it that's been done, so you should have the updated one with you. That's item A. Item B is the annual Air Shirley Regional Middle School Grade 7 trip to Canopy Lake Park on Friday, June 16th, 2023, with the rain date of the 15th. This is an annual meeting that we have. The contact person for it is Marcy Dodge, and it's a one-day trip to Canopy Lake in New Hampshire, leaving at 8:00 in the morning, getting back approximately 4:00 in the afternoon. And they will have a 1 to 10 chaperones that are already have been approved. Item number three is a donation of $12,250 for the Air Shirley Regional High School baseball outfield fence from an anonymous donor. Item D is the warrant memo, which I will really stick with me. I'm out of practice. AP warrant 1139 is for $483,193.36. AP warrant 1140 is $154.70. AP warrant number 1147 is $215.47. AP warrant 1148 is $751,040.27. Then we have payroll warrants. We have five of them. We have payroll warrant number 21, which is for $1,5058. Payroll warrant 21.1, which is for $8,036.87. Payroll warrant number 21.2, which is for $1,521.75. Payroll warrant number 22, which is for $1,013,47.50. And payroll warrant number 22.1, which is for $253. And that concludes the item on the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those items?
No.
I think we have two small corrections. On AP warrant 1140, I show $154.79.
Can you say that again, Kevin? You're kind of blurry.
For AP warrant 1140, the amount is $154.79.
Oh, I'm sorry. Seventy-nine cents. Thank you.
And then also.
When would it miss those four cents?
One other, Joyce. For payroll warrant 22.1, the amount is $253.63.
I most not like the end of it. Go ahead. Put your glasses on, Joyce. All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Is there anything else? Any additions or corrections or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will take a motion to approve that.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented on our agenda tonight.
Seconded.
Second?
It was seconded by Erica.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Was there a second?
Yeah, we do have a second.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Is it unanimous? Thank you very much. Number six, under new business, we have the Thrive Act of Massachusetts H.495, and Dr. Pataki will present that. We have Dr. Pataki. There he is. Hi.
So first of all, I apologize because it's past the time when I use a teacher voice, so you're going to hear a lot of the accent. If you don't understand anything, that's fine. Just ask me to repeat the word. If it's going to sound like tree, it's three. So, yeah, I wanted to come to you guys today on behalf of ASRIA and the MTA to talk about the Thrive Act, that's Massachusetts H.495. You all should have received this general overview of what the MTA is proposing in the state legislature. And what we're asking is, you know, we're going around to all school committees around the state and trying to get their support overall for this act. Mr. Ben Roy is here from the MTA. Do you want to say anything?
Sure. Yeah, we're going around to, you know, any school committee so far that's willing, which it's a slow process because, again, you guys have a ton of stuff on your plates this time of year, as do teachers with, you know, MCAS and the problem happening and whatever else. So slowly but surely, we're getting in. Webster just approved it last week. The idea here, just in a nutshell, we're basically trying to defang the MCAS. We're trying to make MCAS what we think anyway, and what I would argue most and not all teachers think it should be, is a diagnostic test and not a gotcha, for lack of a better term, where, you know, there are punishments attached if you don't do well. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. Are there questions that I could answer about anything, any concerns that I might have?
I'm sorry, sir. Would you just say your name again? I didn't quite hear it.
Ben Roy, the MTA field rep, that's Representative.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions. I agree with it. I've actually been following it. So 2005, I think, was the first year that it was required for graduation. And within three weeks of us being in school, just based upon attendance, we lost 13 kids. We had another 25 kids who were waiting on pins and needles to see if they were going to pass, and we lost another seven students after that. My sister graduated four years after, and the standard then was by junior year, if you didn't pass, you dropped out so that you could get your GED and still go on to college. My youngest sister, who graduated three years after that, about a quarter of her class, if they didn't pass the first time for MCAS, dropped out to get their GED just so that that way they didn't waste their time. So I personally think that it should be a diagnostic test because I will say that my education changed because of the MCAS and the things that I was excited about learning. The abilities that teachers had prior to MCAS were far greater, and I feel like education was more meaningful prior to it. That's how I look at it.
One of the things I didn't know until this whole process started, that we started pushing the Thrive Act, Massachusetts is one of eight states that has a graduation requirement, meaning 42 other states do not. And it's not the top eight, like you think. It's all over the place. So overwhelmingly, they do not have a graduation requirement attached to this. And the idea that if you don't do well enough, they start taking funding away is the most backwards thing I've ever heard of in my life. Because usually the places that start to struggle, struggle because of funding issues. So to cut the funding seems, again, backwards.
So coming from a slightly different perspective, you know, in New York, we have the Regents exams, which you don't take just once. You take them for every subject, every year, and then there are different levels by which you can graduate. And if I told everybody in here that I had a Regents diploma from my high school, would any of you even know what that is?
I don't.
Wow. Congrats. There's one. There's an advanced Regents diploma, a Regents diploma, then a local diploma. It doesn't matter which one you get. If you get any of them, you get into college, you know? It does not matter. What we have seen across this country for decades is a concerted effort to undermine public education, and standardized testing is, in the modern era, one of those efforts. Standardized testing has a very long history of racial discrimination, discriminating against particularly the poor and working-class families of this country. Standardized testing in the 1890s was specifically targeting those groups to deny them entry into institutions of higher education so that those institutions would be kept white and affluent. These measures, you know, the MCAS, the Regents exams, whatever state you look at, it just comes down to corruption. We can democratize education once again by supporting things like the Thrive Act. On that note, after my historical speech there, I'm going to give the school committee this from ASRIA. We have collected over 91 signatures from members in the unit and folks who aren't in the unit but are affiliated with the ASRSD community. And this is our statement for you. There you go, Dr. M.
Thank you.
Your hand. Yeah, I definitely agree that MCAS should not be a graduation requirement. I have absolutely no problems with that at all. The problem that, I mean, I'm forming my opinion as we go here, but there are a couple of issues that I think we'll have to take deeper dives. One, eliminating state receiverships for certain communities, I mean, New Bedford, Holyoke, there are a number of places. And I agree, having the state takeover, if you take a look at how well it's worked, it hasn't worked well at all. But the only reason they're there is because local control failed dramatically. And there are a bunch of reasons why local control fails dramatically, and usually that has a lot to do with who's not getting the money. They don't have any money to support the schools, right? So that part of it, having somebody else run the school that doesn't have any money, is not going to help you get anywhere. So that aspect of it has to help, I think. They made some inroads in redoing Chapter 70 funding for the Commonwealth to help some of those communities more. So I think there'll be some improvement there, but there'll have to be some way to get more aid if local control doesn't exist to run the school district effectively. It's a very difficult thing to do, but I think there's going to have to be a much deeper dive to figure out exactly what you're going to do when you have a really low-performing school district, because that's a lot of people, and a lot of people without a lot of means would know where else to go than stay in a low-performing school district. So that's, I'm not saying, I don't have a solution. I'm just saying that's going to have to be studied very heavily.
Yeah, I understand that. What I would tell you, and I'm not going to name the district because I don't want to, I'm on the record here. But I will tell you, one of the districts currently in receivership. The receiver, which is the de facto superintendent in that situation, believes that teachers are washed up by their fifth year in the profession. And that district, so feel free to Google, you can probably find everyone I'm talking about, they have the highest turnover rate in the state, and it's by design. And again, before I did this, I taught for 12 years. So I am a teacher, I'm a certified teacher. Anyone here who's educated, please feel free to correct me. Your first year, I would argue, at least myself, I would speak for anyone else, I was bad. My second year, I think I was probably adequate. It's your third year before you're really like, okay, I kind of have my feet under me, and you know when a lesson's tanking. You know, like you can change on the fly, if you will, and figure it out as opposed to just, I don't know, want to see me juggle chalk erasers because this is failing. So the idea that having a teacher be gone, you want to get rid of them by design, you want them all gone by year five, to me is absolutely insane, but that's currently one of the receivership plans. I mean, that's doomed to fail, in my personal opinion. Maybe it'll end up being some magical success. I can't see how. So I think getting rid of that type of process where you bring people in who, I would argue, have zero expertise and come up with terrible plans like that is only going to be a start in helping make things better. Are there still going to be problems? Like, yeah, for sure. This is not like, you know, a panacea. This isn't a pill that will save everything, but it will at least get rid of the things where you punish people, especially, you know, again, I don't want to sound over melodramatic here, but where you punish towns and districts for being poor. Because I feel like that's, if you look at the places that are in receivership, it's not Wilson. Okay, they're doing fine. It's not Harvard, they're one of mine. They're doing okay. It's Holyoke. It's New Bedford. It's Southbridge. Those are the places that struggle, and they're poor.
Right. So that's clearly going to take a deeper dive. There's a lot of whores in there, but it's certainly going to have to be addressed because when there's a failing school district and there's no movement on local control, something else has to happen. I don't know what that is, but something else is going to have to happen because a lot of kids are involved. The other thing that, I don't know, in creating the master plan on how this gets integrated, if you take a look at Ed reform in 93, I mean, I go back, I graduated in 1974 from this school, parts of the school that are still here anyway, right? And I take a look at how education and stuff was run back then, and it was like, I was in, I mean, a select group, and, you know, we had the right teachers, we had everything we needed, right? And then there was problem kids that had somebody follow around and make sure that nothing really bad happened. But there was a large slog in the middle that was just, not really much was happening for them. I mean, they weren't getting what they needed and whether they advanced. And basically, when I went to school, I take a look at my whole graduating class, right? As long as you came to school and didn't cause any trouble, you'd get a pat on the ass you'd be on that stage for graduation, you know? And I think people were okay if you weren't disrupting everybody, and they knew that you needed a diploma to get into the Army and, you know, that sort of stuff, and they sort of rolled along with it. So Ed reform tried to deal with a lot of that to let, make sure that the rank-and-file people got some of the benefits of the system, you know? And then, and the pendulum swung, I mean, all over the place from then for, you know, we have a big AP expansion, we have a lot of special ed stuff, but there's a big group in the middle that you always have to move in. MCAS scoring or any other type of analysis on what you're learning is an important cog to make sure that what you're trying to teach is getting learned, the core curriculum is moving forward. What role that plays in a district, we don't know. At some form, at some time when they create the nuts and bolts, if this is successful, if this passes, they're going to have to take a look at what happened before 93 and figure out, how do we not go back to that by eliminating this? So there's, you know, like, I have two big questions, two big concerns, and absolutely no solutions to either one of the things I brought up. But those are the types of things that are going to have to be addressed.
Well, the second one, I think I can address, Dr.
Yeah, I can address that as well. So the data that we have suggests that standardized testing does not encourage school districts, any school district, to focus on those students in the middle. It focuses on the students who are just there. So we focus, we micro-focus on those students that are just there at that line for proficient, whatever that means. And then we focus on those students to get them above proficiency, at the detriment of people who are above proficiency, people who are slightly above proficiency, and people who are far below proficiency. Since 1968, when standardized testing became a really huge push in the country with the various educational formats of the 1960s, what you saw was standardized testing, if you looked at the line, whatever, from 1968 would skyrocket through to the 1990s. At the same time, teacher autonomy in the classroom skyrockets in the opposite direction, plummets. Along with that line showing teacher autonomy is a few different criteria by which we allegedly judge the performance of students. Critical thinking among student skills. So those student critical thinking skills tanked. The ability for students to remember beyond the test tanked, because after all, the unspoken motto or mantra was, we're teaching to this test, and then once the test is over, you chuck it. If we really wanted to impact or care about what these kids are doing for the rest of their lives, and if we really want to impact them and make them go forward, we move beyond the test. When I see, even in our district, especially in mathematics, teachers who feel extremely obligated to teach that test, okay, everybody in here, we're learning about decimals. Oh, but Mr. Cleary here doesn't get decimals. Well, sorry, Mr. Cleary, you're going to have to take it upon yourself to come and see me after your time. If you can't get a ride, that sucks, but I need to move us on because there's curriculum that I need to touch to get to that test. And that leaves students behind, and the test does not account for that. Test is actually designed to not care about that. When we review that data, all we can see is, where did that little bar that said that we're proficient, did that stay the same? Did that go up? And who can we target? What 15, or 20, or 30 students can we target to make sure that that particular bar goes up even slightly?
And if you find a way to do it, again, I'm not in any way saying that's wrong, because I agree 100%, but if by some chance here's someone who likes the MCAS or those type of, that's fine. I'm not here to criticize that. If you use it as a diagnostic, you can still use it to find where you think there are holes. Okay, we need to focus more on fourth grade reading. Okay, great, we know that based on the test. That would still be there. In terms of graduation, that would still be what the school decides. You can still have high standards, the same as you do now. That test isn't what's giving you high standards. Okay? Holding kids, you have to have X number of credits, you have to take this class, that class, you have to have, you know, at least two foreign languages to graduate, or whatever you decide locally, you can still hold the students to that standard without a test. The test doesn't do anything. All the Thrive Act would do is eliminate the negative repercussions if something goes wrong. You could still decide that you don't like the leadership that's here. I'm not saying that. But, you know, hypothetically, you know, scores aren't going well, you could still go ahead and make whatever changes you want, but they won't be taking your funding away. They won't, no one from not around here won't come in and bring in random Joe Schmo who decides we only want teachers for three or four years, or whatever other, you know, crazy plan. It's personally, and I want this for my school where my kids are, I would rather the local people try to come up with a solution. You know, again, if it doesn't work, maybe they're not the right people. That's for the school committee and superintendent to decide, depending on which people we're talking about. I don't want it to be just random Joe Schmo that they bring in who has no idea about anything else here except what we saw on the back of a baseball card, because that's basically what this is. They're handing you a sheet, you're looking at it, saying, okay, cool, we strike out a lot. We got to fix that. Yeah, but do you know why he strikes? No, but we got to fix strikeouts. Well, that's no. That doesn't do anything. So the idea behind the Thrive Act is just eliminate the idea of bringing in someone random who doesn't have, you know, I'm exaggerating here, who probably doesn't have a good plan from what I've seen, at least in, you know, what's happened so far in these schools that have been taken over. Eliminate that. MCAS doesn't go away. That's not part of it. Okay, you can still use it however you want. You can still have whatever high standards you choose for your students. Just they're determined by you, not by the state, whoever the state brings it. That's all this does. And we keep saying defangs the MCAS. Just makes it a test.
I find it interesting, too. I just want to point out with the graduation requirement, MCAS tests, you know, from third grade up to 10th grade, and they tie graduation with one test in high school in the 10th grade, and not even anything that students have learned in the 11th grade or the 12th grade. Now, the only time they would take any kind of MCAS beyond 10th grade is if they didn't pass and have to retake it. So I don't know how they can correlate readiness at graduation with an MCAS that you take two years into your high school career. So I just throw that out there as further support for not having it be a graduation requirement. With the receivership, I think, you know, there definitely needs to be some work in the Commonwealth, probably, about who is placed as a receiver in communities, but I can't speak to whether that should be eliminated altogether.
Madam Chair, if I may?
I'm not, but yes.
I don't know if the chair can see me. Having worked in a district that was not in receivership but was forced to have assistance from the state, there is, Mr. Quinty, already a level of how you can get assistance without receivership. It's called the SSOS, Statewide System of Support, where they have experts come in. And you build a plan together to turn schools around. I've been part of that process. One school that I was asked to take over in November was under SOS guidance. I came in, we built the plan together, and we actually moved that school from the bottom 3% of all schools into state, in the state. And six months later, they were in the top, not the top, excuse me, they're still the bottom 27th percentile, but it was a massive gain. But this was not the state's plan. This was the state assisting the plan that the teachers and the new administrators in that building came up with together. So there is that mechanism that works actually really well. State receivership doesn't. I'm not sure if there are double-digit districts that have been in receivership that are out. Typically, if you get in receivership, you stay in receivership. Yes, Madam Chair?
You're not speaking directly into the microphone, so it's hard to hear you sometimes. If you could just give me the gist of what you were saying.
I was saying that there was a level of support before receivership that is actually very successful with the state. It's called the statewide system of support, where a group of experts that work with DESI or consultants that DESI hires comes in and helps administration and teachers and school committees, if they so choose, build an internal plan and execute that plan. I was part of that team in my prior district in Fitchburg and had some great results in some schools that were in the bottom 10%, actually getting them out of the bottom 10%. The receivership typically, I don't, I can't at this time name a district that was in a receivership that is out. Southbridge has been in receivership for years. Lawrence has been in receivership for years. Holyoke has been in for years. I think Mr. Quinty made an excellent point with the new SOA Act and the funding formula. These districts that in the past were really hurting for funding now have, they're looking for ways to actually spend the money. There are school districts locally that have doubled the number of special education and adult teachers in a year, large districts. So the funding is now absolutely more fair for some of these urban and very poor rural cities and towns. Now, unfortunately, the towns that it's going to affect are places like Aaron Shirley. So we have to advocate for, you know, a funding formula that will help us in the future, but I, I'm just speaking up because I actually do believe in many of the things that the Thrive Act states, especially not having this as a high school requirement. We know our students that don't graduate high school are going, they're going to make 60% less money, they're much more likely to go into prison, they're much more likely to be addicted to drugs, they're much more likely to be a single-family household. And those are the stats that I can remember off the top of my head. There are much more. We're putting our students at a huge disadvantage when they don't have a high school diploma, and we're relying on three tests to tell us if they graduate, not four years, or really 12 years with us, receiving education from us in our opinion and grading. I personally believe we're more qualified to make that determination and work with our students than a standardized test. However, I like MCAS, and it gives us terrific information. I don't want to see that go away. It does hold the administration and teachers accountable for what we're doing in the classroom, but to require that for a high school graduation requirement, I think, is misguided.
I think in my experience, it's hard for me to not put faces with some of the impacts of this, because in my business, I see all sorts of families, and a lot of them, you know, don't have a lot of scratch. And when I know some of the family situations and some of the students that would struggle to pass the MCAS graduation requirement, like, there's so many other things that are to happen in those kids' lives. Feel responsible for throwing another sack of shit on their backs when they're 17 or 18 years old is brutally unfair. It does nothing to us if we think and evaluate them as a total person deserve a diploma from our school. It doesn't hurt us at all. But if you don't do it, it cripples them. It just makes everything they're facing that much harder, and it seems ultimately pointless.
One of the other concerns on the flip side of that, given, like I One of the other concerns on the flip side of that, given, like I said, the other alternatives is when you have a student who's in the 10th grade who doesn't pass and they decide to leave and get their GED because they're trying to get into college, you're now forcing them into adulthood. They're just so that they can simply get ahead, so now you're creating a whole nother level of issues. And we're talking about our kids, you know, struggling with social interaction, and then you throw them in college. And they're still being managed by their parents, they're, you're in one area, you're inhibiting them, and then in another one, you're forcing them out. So that's always been the other part of the struggle that I've seen. Watching, you know, basically either they're going to work because they can't afford to go to school yet, but they're 16, 17 years old, so they have different rules for work, you know. Then they finally do get to go to work, but they're only 17 years old, they're trying to go to school and manage adulthood and figure out who they are, and they're not even a legal adult yet. So, looking at the lives that I've seen, how this affects, I completely agree with it. And also, I had my mom's teachers when I came through air, and watching them try and learn how to adjust to teaching to MCAS, a lot of them just said they were dying inside, like they didn't want to teach anymore because they couldn't, they couldn't teach with autonomy. They had to teach to the curriculum of the MCAS, which, again, like when you talked about critical thinking, it was a gradual change as a student to watch from going from critical thinking skills in the 9th grade, which, when I was in the 9th grade, that was, 9/11 happened. That was my 9th grade year. And watching critical thinking from that phase versus critical thinking in my senior year in 2005 was vastly different. It was pretty much unheard of because all the teachers were saying, alright, we're just trying to get through X. So then that becomes your mentality, is you're just trying to get through, or you're just trying to get by, which is a scarcity mentality. So now you have a whole bunch of students going out into the world, trying to educate themselves with a scarcity mentality as opposed to critical thinking. But, it's just an observation.
This is a very interesting read here, because of course, I remember going back and going to many programs on state standards. Do we feel that some of the state standards need to, does the MTA feel that number of the state standards need to be revised and maybe upgraded as a continuing evolution as part of this?
I don't know that I'm qualified to speak on every subject. I'm a history teacher. I actually did not mind the history standards. I was fine with them, I talked to them, I had no issue, I didn't think it limited me at all. That said, history was not, minus that like one or two test years where they tried it, history is not a MCAS-tested subject. So, you know, I don't know that I can speak to every single standard. That's a lot, I'd be lying if I told you I knew them all. So, that's, that's a discussion for people far above my pay grade who do that.
Madam Chair, if I may?
If we want to expand perhaps and look from different methods or something, it seems like the state standards, this has been a while now, some of them maybe should be reviewed and work done. I don't think there's any current work going on on the state standards, right?
Madam Chair, if I may? The state standards are actually updated frequently.
Are they?
They are. It's an ongoing process. They're not changed wholly, but they are looked at, I believe annually and updated.
Kind of following up on that bullet point number three there, where it says establishing a commission to create a new whole child system. Would that commission, what would, what's your view of what that commission would be, how it would work, and how it would be made?
I don't have all the answers to that. I think, again, I think the, I'm gonna go get a little bit with my own opinion, I think, a little bit here, as opposed to MTA proper. I think we have people at the very, very top of MTA who do not like MCAS at all and would like to see it gone. I do not see that happening anytime soon, if ever, to be honest. It just seems, so I think what that is asking for is, you know, whenever bills start, which is where they're, when acts start like this, did you not hear it?
She said she lost her sound.
Yeah, she's frozen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. But when acts start, when they're always proposed, they're always proposed with like, here's what we would love in the most perfect of all worlds. And then people talk about it, and you whittle it a little bit down, you come up with what everybody could live with and what would pass. Wouldn't that be wonderful, where we all look at it, we find something that might be a better version of MCAS? Sure, great. I think right now, in a nutshell, what we're trying to do is eliminate the graduation requirement and eliminate, you know, the state receivership portion of MCAS that's attached to it. I don't think that right now, let's chuck MCAS out, is really what this is. Again, if we're forming a commission to look at, is there a better way? Sure, I don't see any harm in that. Maybe they find out there is, at least so that they can come up with. Or maybe they find a way to make it better. Better's never a bad thing. But like I said, we're looking to eliminate, really looking to eliminate two things with the Thrive Act. The main goals here are to eliminate the graduation requirement and to get rid of receivership.
The standardized testing MCAS from Massachusetts is a federal requirement, so we would have to have some type of statewide standardized assessment for federal funding. If we didn't, we would lose funding, so this-
Is that one of the federal requirements?
Yes. The statewide testing is a federal requirement. If not MCAS, it would be something else. A few years ago, it was-
Park.
Park, thank you. Park was a, they piloted that, park was a tremendous failure, and they went back to measured progress in MCAS.
So can I just ask you guys, where does this stand now and what our next steps are?
Well, where it stands right now is we're still kind of in the, I'm not gonna say infancy, we're in the beginning process of going to school committees, because you're the second one that I've gone to, but all my colleagues are doing this around the state.
Okay.
We're trying to get school committees to pass resolutions supporting this, because then we have, we already have legislators who support this. And when I came, I went to all the various schools at lunchtime, I do union business during the day, and I had, that's where the signatures came from. We also set up an email, and they emailed the state legislators that represent Aaron Shirley, asking them to support it. I know we have some that definitely do, Jamie Eldridge is the first that pops to my head, I know he doesn't, there are many more. But I think if, we're trying to arm them with basically some ammo or some backup, however you want to word that, where we can say that we have X number of school committees, or, you know, one guy, woman, whatever, can come out and say that this, you know, of the 10 districts in my area, whatever, that I, this many have voted to support. That's what we're going for now, is just try to get some grassroots support for the Thrive Act.
So it's a bill that's currently filed?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
If there are 42 states that don't require this requirement, are those 42 states not accepting federal funding?
No, they all have tests. What's required by the federal government is that you have a state testing system. It does not require that you have to pass and get X score in order to graduate. That is not a federal requirement, that is eight states only.
And this, correct me if I'm wrong, but this goes back to the problem behind that. And the issue for the federal government at the time, creating this law and implementing the criteria, if you want your federal funding, then you have to have a standardized test. The problem that the federal government was having is, on the one hand, they want to institute that, on the other hand, they don't want to impose on the states some kind of, you know, federal program. So the middle ground was that states could either keep the system that they have in place or just tweak it a little bit so that you had something that would cover that standardized test. But again, not one that needs to necessarily count towards any reception of diploma.
Right, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm just, I don't think we're-
Are you asking for a vote on this, or any action on our part tonight?
That's up to you. If you're not ready to vote tonight, that's okay. Vote when you're ready. If you're ready tonight, great, whatever, up to you.
Madam Chair, there is a resolution. We wanted the school committee to have the opportunity for the presentation. If the school committee so chooses, we can put the resolution on the next agenda to be voted on.
I'm not ready to vote tonight.
I'd like to have the bill in the committee.
But I would want some time to do some more research myself. I have not, outside of tonight, this is the first detailed information I've seen.
There's a lot at stake here.
Now, the next, I think we should have it on the agenda for our next, but we're also gonna have a new member, so I don't know if that would also be right, a brand-new member to the school committee.
So maybe in two, in two school committees, so we can catch the new ones up?
Yeah, I think we, maybe we have it on the agenda, and we just review this for the new members, and then, I think we need to vote, but I would think they have the time as well.
Maybe even bring the resolution.
Exactly, bring a copy of the resolution, so we can redo. Good.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, if you stop by the middle school, this will be on my exam, so.
There you go.
Okay, we'll come to see you.
Like the New York accent, by the way.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Dr. Rinda. You have school choice for 23, 24.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm asking the school committee to vote tonight to open school choice based on individual grade levels and available seats. We changed last year to follow the state guidelines for school choice to hold a lottery once or twice a year. The first lottery would happen in August. So we did provide with you tonight the number of available seats in each building and by grade level, which you would be voting on. But this will change from now until August. We will post this on the website, so the public can see it. But we are trying to cap our early elementary grades at 22 at the highest, and everywhere else at 24. And we had talked about last year, only opening school choice for the high school for 9th Are there any questions, or would you like me to review that?
Any questions, anyone?
I guess I'm just curious, I didn't hear that, I could understand maybe a little bit about why only grade nine, but any summary about why only?
Well, typically in high school, when you have school choices very late in a student's academic career, there usually, it would be impossible for us to get them to meet their graduation requirements. Yes?
What would be, what would be our, I see that in LAW, grade two with 22.6 students is closed, but we're saying that there's four openings in grade three. What number, what is our maximum or our ideal number of students in each grade? Because if I add up grade, well, three sections, grade five. But if we have 48 already, and we have three sections in grade five, doesn't 18, if we took 18, doesn't that throw us way over our ideal?
No, if 18, 18 in this three sections, so we could add six students per section, which would bring it up to an average of 22 students per classroom. That should really say class size, not student-teacher ratio at the top of that column.
Because I thought 22 was our number that we used.
It is, so six plus 16 is 22. So the reason, there's three sections, so that 18 would really be six per classroom.
And these are the same number of sections we had before?
It is. There's a slight change in sections at Page Hilltop. Overall, they're the same number of sections in the school, but because we currently have a very small, I believe it's second grade class, we decided to keep, to make five sections at first grade to keep lower numbers in that early, for the early literacy, which has been extremely helpful. And because of that, next year, third grade, we'll only have three sections, and we will keep five sections at first. Excuse me, four sections.
Questions from anyone? So did we increase the number of sections in certain places?
We have overall the same exact number of sections as we have had in the past. We have redistributed sections at Page Hilltop based on class size.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else?
No.
Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent for 2023, 24, for accepting school choice students?
So moved.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, I'm just, the microphones aren't that great.
Yeah, we have the motion and the second, Joyce.
Motion and the second, thank you. Any more discussion, any more questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
No? Okay, then that's unanimous, thank you very much. So the next item we have on the agenda was, I asked people to think of the goals for the school committee. We have goals for teachers, we have goals for superintendent, and we should have some things that we would like to bring up for discussion on goals. If anybody has anything, I'm going to tell you that one of mine, that I think is going to happen, is that we move out of this room and move into the library, and that's gonna happen this summer. So, but there's other things that we might want to see done. We might want to see Dr. Rinda to jump on, and it's nice to go discuss that with him individually, but it really should be what the whole committee wants to see and wants to do. It's a strong committee who does this, and I didn't know if anybody prepared for tonight, because we can table this till next week, if you like, my next meeting, excuse me, if you like. Everybody just jump in right away.
Well, I'll tell you my plan, and I guess my answer right now is I don't know. But I mentioned this to Dr. Rinda a while ago, I haven't talked to too many here, but maybe one of my goals is to talk to more teachers, administrators, just people in the school system, to hear what's going well, what their recommendations are. So my goal is, I plan to kind of kick off a listening session and invite anybody that would like to sit down with me, so I can just meet more teachers, meet more staff, and talk about the school system and the direction. So I guess that's my goal over the next several months, and then I think from those discussions, obviously I'll form where I think, what I heard, where some of the priorities should be.
My goal's very similar to Kevin, just starting out with touring first, like seeing what the school system looks like at work. And then, after that, giving people the opportunity to speak as well. I think it's better to be more well-informed with people that are here, you know, working here, in their space and their time, seeing them, you know, do what they do, even making observations, because sometimes people aren't aware of things, because they're just used to doing it all the time. And then from there, maybe making some more decisions. I think, I have two goals, so that's the goal, to make sure that I'm doing my best abilities as a school committee member. The other one, I think, would be here, you know, amongst our group, and just making sure that as, you know, I'm as efficient as possible as a member, you know, that we can work as efficiently as possible in our meetings, and be as comprehensive, and have some comprehensive discussions on topics that we have, is another thing, that's another goal I'd really like to see move forward as well.
Jim, I'm gonna jump you if you're- I don't have a goal, since I won't be on the school committee, but I do have a suggestion that I've always kind of felt as a struggle for myself. And it involves when school committee gets correspondence by email from parents or whoever. I feel like there needs to be- I feel like there needs to be some sort of process that the school committee or some sort of policy that the school committee has for responding to that, that maybe it be one person, that that's their role, is to, you know, respond to somebody and explain that one person will respond for the, for the whole group, so that you're not getting six responses back, or you're only getting one and not five, and then it looks like the other five people don't care what you have to say. So that would be a suggestion that I would have, is to just have maybe like the secretary or whoever's, you know, a designated person, that that would be their role and to make sure that, you know, you talk about, like, if there's something that needs to be discussed, you know, you follow up on it, but that public is aware that not everyone's going to respond to them and that they're going to get one response and it's going to be consistent. That, that's just a suggestion, because I always felt like if I saw that somebody responded, I didn't necessarily want to respond, or, you know, just, you know, I think there's some open meeting law concerns about too many people on an email, so that's just a suggestion moving forward.
Michelle, that's a very good idea. Would you think that it should be whoever the chairperson is to handle that and then they can distribute it to anybody else who wants to answer it?
Yeah, I mean, you guys, you can decide however you want to do it. It could be one person, that that's just their role, some member of the school committee that is particularly interested or wants to take it on, or it could be the chair, it could be however you want to do it. It's just, I just think it's a good practice, just because we've never done it and I always wish we had.
I'd be interested in what the open meeting laws are. I mean, to me, in an ideal world, you have one person that I think it's a good idea that may be responding, but typically we copy the others, so they can see the discussion and so forth. If you can't do that because you have too many on an email, then I would just be interested in what is that requirement? And then it may make sense that there's one person responding, but at least one or two others that are copied, so there's a few that are just in the loop and can further that discussion.
So maybe making it a policy to where if an email goes out from a parent or concerned citizen.
Sorry, I was going to, could you speak into the microphone?
Can you hear me now, Joyce?
Yeah, now.
Okay. So I think, yeah, maybe it's a good idea to have a policy where if in fact, let's say, one or two members get the email, it's sent out to all of the members, however, we have a designated person who will respond. If that designated person is not the chair, then maybe that designated person will always circle back with the chair. But if we have a policy in place, I think it'll just be a lot easier, because then we can always point people to where that policy is.
I don't.
Communication is always important.
Yeah. I think everyone needs to know if it, you know, obviously, so you have to work that out however you work it out, but I just, I do think that there needs to be some communication that one will respond for everyone, so that it's not mixed messages from five different people.
I think, in my experience anyway, my interactions with the people that I will call the voters or the general public or anything, I can hardly think of a situation where what they're talking about would be the purview of the school committee. Hardly ever. It's always, it's a principal, athletic, it's, it's some other issue and I have to immediately redirect them to the chain of command type stuff. Because the worst thing we can do is to try to start meddling in what's have to do with the operation, because we just don't have the whole story. There's a certain amount of things we're supposed to do and a certain amount of things we're supposed to stay out of, except for asking for clarifications on issues in certain places. So I think whoever has this job has to be a real good writer to say how concerned they are and redirect and not really put anything out there, because there's a lot involved in this situation, always, you know, and, but you want to validate, you know, you want to be thankful for the fact that they are targeting you and you want to validate, to a certain extent, their position, but rarely is it something that we can address directly and we have to refer them somewhere else. So somebody's got to be a really good, if we do elect them to someone, they have to be a really good wordsmith.
Well, Chris was very executive in the emails I saw, so let's just vote him in now. Give him the job, well, since he's not here.
Absolutely. I agree with you, Jim. I think, yeah, most of it probably is going to be from an education, you know, perspective, which is totally great, but I do, I do agree with Michelle, there's those moments where we, we want to make sure that everybody understands that we are concerned, that we are listening, but because we're trying to be obedient to the, oh my gosh, I can't think of the statute, but we're trying to be appropriate in our roles. So I think that's a great idea, but it is something I really would like to jump on, too. I like that, Michelle.
I'll keep them coming. I'll just keep emailing you.
And Chris?
I mean, certainly we have to iron out that line of communication, but there's so much that we shouldn't be answering within the laws of, you know, who you turn something over to and how you answer someone. I made a big mistake earlier in the year and had to go back and correct it. And I did go back and correct it, but once I looked it up. So they, you know, many things should just go to Dr. Rinda, our superintendent's office, and go from there, but not answering the community. They don't understand sometimes that we can't answer them, but then we need to work with that, even though we can't answer them.
I think a lot of times, you know, when we are copied on something, it's usually maybe to you and they're copying the school committee, and I think they just want to be, you know, just get that, make sure the school committee's aware. But I, you know, and you want to respond, but I think that in those situations, I think one response and then explain, it's just one response, would be helpful and would, you know, go a long way.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
A back and forth between a quorum of members of school committee is in fact a violation of open meeting laws. So one response would allow the school committee to avoid that, that trap.
Yes, Madam Chair.
I just, some, some school districts also will have like one all-encompassing email, so if they were going to email ASRSD school committee members, you would all get it, Dr. Rinda would also be copied on that email, and then one, if you did a reply all, then at least everybody, one person reply all, everybody would know that.
That'd be good.
Email was responded to, as opposed to each, I mean, you could see each other's own individual email addresses, but we wouldn't have to publish those, we could just do it.
The distribution group?
That's a good idea.
When they come to the group.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good.
Is that hard to set up?
No.
No.
Well, let's have everybody think about that and we can bring it up again at the next meeting to see if we want to go that way. Think about it over the next couple of weeks and we can go on from there. Anybody else want to bring anything up? I am going to be working on a table where we all can have a discussion and not line up like pigeons in a, in a shooting gallery, but that, hopefully I'll get there with that. Anybody else? Dr. Rinda, you have a superintendent's report?
I do, thank you. So first.
I'm going to the microphones, I can't show up.
So first, I would like to thank and congratulate Michelle Granger. This is her last school committee meeting. She has served the students and families of Air Shirley Regional School District for 12 years, also being part of the High School Building Project Committee and a member of the Fields Committee. We thank you. We wish you would have reconsidered, but thank you for the time you spent away from your family and friends to better the education of all of the students in Air Shirley. So on behalf of the students of Air Shirley, we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Oh my gosh, those are beautiful. Thank you.
Okay. And I get the privilege, I'm so happy I get to do this. Okay. Can you see it? Okay. So I have the privilege of handing you the certificate of recognition.
Thank you.
For your time, your service, and thank you, Joyce, for letting me do that. But we want to say thank you. I know it's been a long road. I'm really excited for your next steps, because I know they're going to be great. But I do, I would, if you could just sit next to me anyway, even though you're not going to be here, that'd be great.
I was around. Thank you.
Also, so thank you for the years you've been here. Please stick around. And we appreciate all you've done.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm still going to live in Air, still going to have a house here, so I'm not far and always willing to support the schools. I'll open this later.
I'd like to say that this is premature. I'm still hoping for a big writing campaign on Tuesday. You never know, anything can happen Tuesday in elections, we all know that. I mean, I've been here for the whole time that Michelle has been here, and many, many people have contributed a lot to the committee. Pat Kelly, Danny Gleason, John DeForge, Cheryl Simmons, Jordan Leoni, everybody puts their time in, but of all the people I've known and all the time I've been here, no one has done as much as Michelle Granger has done. Outside of the regular, I mean, Alton E. Chair, which I've really appreciated, and every negotiation for any group that we've had to have contracts with. You know, her expertise in that has been incredible. And a lot of times, things in school committee aren't really smooth, right? Because when people care about stuff, people get emotional about stuff, she's always been a calming influence. And in these types of issues, things of great value take great effort, right? And, and that's what's happened here the entire time. And, and I've heard it said that people come into your life for a reason, bringing something you must learn, and will lead to those who will help you most to grow if you let them and you help them in return. I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I am who I am today because I've known you. Like a comet pulled from orbit as it passes the sun or a stream that meets a stone in a distant wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? I do believe that I've been changed for the better because I've known you. And because I have known you, I have been changed for good.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Mrs. Granger.
Thank you, Mr. Quinty. Appreciate that.
I'm not going to follow that. Good picture for everything that you've done for our school season. It's been amazing.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, how do I talk about a strategic plan now? That was fantastic. A very quick update about the strategic plan. We have been working with the Lynch Leadership Academy what seems like all year, or really the past few years, with the equity audit, which has led into strategic planning. We are putting the finishing touches on that and we are excited and anxious to present this at one of the next school committee meetings. So more to come on that. The regional agreement, I have reached out to our attorney, our attorney Brezner Han to inquire about the history of the Mercy, excuse me, the, yes, the, the history with Murphy, Essie Toomey, and Lehan about the regional agreement. We will be meeting with him about that and some other issues, either the end of this week, early next week, and we will report out that information at the next school committee. Some really great news about the Special Olympics Unified being selected once again to be a Special Olympics Unified Champion School. Very proud to announce that, that for 2023, the Special Olympics Unified Champion School is once again, one of them is ASRSD. This is the third year in a row reaching this honor. It is a difficult honor to achieve for just one year. The fact that our high school was able to do this for three consecutive years is a testament to the hard work being done in our school community. Congratulations to all. Some more good news. Andromeda One FRC 4905 team had an exciting trip to the first Robotics World Championship in Houston. There were 27 travelers from April 19th through April 23rd. The students had an opportunity to meet and compete with teams from Turkey, France, China, Japan, Israel, Mexico, Canada, and Azerbaijan. How'd I do?
There you go.
Not even close?
Nice job.
They had a record of five wins and five losses. What we are most proud about is the team's ability to quickly overcome critical failures where the robot arm mount was severed during a match. It is a great example of the strong problem-solving and persistence and resilient skills applied on the robotics teams. Congratulations to all. I don't think any of us are ever surprised to hear positive news about the robotics program in Air Shirley. We do have a couple of updates for college acceptances. Ava Maria University and Nichols College seniors, I know they're all watching this right now, please get those in. There's not too many school committee meetings left in the year. We want to make sure that the col, your college of choice is recognized.
I'd like to have the University of Vermont added to the list. We have a person in my household that's going to be a chemistry major.
Awesome.
Yay.
We will make sure that that is in there.
And these are just acceptances, not, not commitments, right? Like this is just schools that students have been accepted to, so.
Right.
Just pointing that out.
It's just acceptances?
Yeah, so the students, when they receive an acceptance letter, they give it to the guidance department and then the guidance department of the high school populates this one.
So this, this list is so short.
Because the students are not providing their letters to the department.
Okay.
Right, the guidance department asks for proof and the students are like, why do I care? Why would I care?
Forward those emails.
Continue to send us the.
Yes.
Actually, that's a good point. Parents, you're getting these emails too from the colleges that your kids are accepted to.
Send it out.
Oh, I'm kidding.
You are. I forgot them.
Yeah. They're, they're bugging me for a, the ones that she did not choose are still bugging me for a deposit. The deadline's today for a few of the schools. Sports update, this was submitted by Mr. Kendall. Joyce, I will do my best, but I am not Steve on this one, so sorry to disappoint. The spring sports season is about halfway through and there, there's plenty of excitement. Boys and girls track and field, the boys and girls track teams are both 3-0 heading into the final two weeks of the dual meet season. The Panthers are at Maynard today in the final league meet before hosting Kingsborough on May 11th. Janus Brezner Hand Track will host the Central Mass Division II District Championships on May 13th and the Midland Wachusett D League meet on May 16th. Two school records were set last Saturdays, last Saturday during Central Mass relays. The girls 4x400 team, Elizabeth Cruz, Isabel Brezner Han, Jordan.
Kazakowski.
Kazakowski, thank you, and Emily Churchill ran a 4.24.51, while the boys team of Arthur Rubriero, Cole New, Patrick Bergen, and Jacob Cowrun ran a 3.36.32. Congratulations to Jacob Cowrun on his commitment to Northeastern to run track. The pole vote team of Lorelei Levy, Isabel Brezner Han, Ada Perwak placed fourth at the relays, marking the first time Air Shirley has scored in pole vault in years. The new pole vault pit area is already paying off. Unified track, the unified track team consists of 14 students, there are seven athletes and seven partners. The Panthers defeated Marlboro in the opening meet at the Janus Brezner Hand Track last Wednesday and had a great meet with Littleton yesterday. Janus Brezner Hand Track will host the Midwatch Unified League meet on May 21st. Nine schools will be participating. High school baseball, the baseball team is playing great. They're off to a 7-3 start. Cam Marshall, who will play baseball at Merrimack next fall, has been on fire, hitting a couple of monster home runs to help the Panthers to wins. John Ikakoni has also been a monster offensively, while Tyler Crawford and Kevin Sarette have been lights-out pitching. The Panthers face Bromfield tomorrow in a key league matchup. The JV team has been playing very well. The Panthers have a, have had solid pitching and hitting and the future looks quite bright. High school softball, the girls team has been hanging tough despite a tough schedule. The Panthers are five instead of seven. The JV team has shown massive improvements from day one and has posted a 3-4 record thus far. Lacrosse, Carly Iwa and Maddie Leoni and Malia Figueroa have had, have been stalwarts and the Grant Dunstable Co-op Varsity Team, Taylor New and Cara Fallon have also played well for the Crusaders, who are at the Shover Regional today. Preston Campner, yeah, Campner and Zach Ikakoni and Julian Calley have played well for the Lunenburg Co-op Varsity Team. Robotics teacher Phil Moore is the Knights JV coach. Flag football, Air Shirley is one of eight schools participating in the New England Patriots Foundation inaugural flag football league. The club sport has garnered a ton of media attention with Gwen Conners, Malia Figueroa, being interviewed on Channel 7 and Channel 4 respectively. The Panthers have 13 players, including two from Lunenburg and one from Grant Dunstable. We received a $5,000 grant, new uniforms and equipment from the Patriots Foundation. Air Shirley will host eight teams for games at the Harold G. Norton Athletic Complex on May 18th and May 24th. The championship round of the league will be contested. The championship round of the league will be contested, contested at Gillette Stadium in June. The Panthers are 2-0, defeating Nidham and Peabody in the opening games at Doyle Field. Air Shirley travels to Chelsea this Thursday night. Girls' golf, the girls' golf team continues to show improvement. Emily O'Hanigan has been consistently shooting in the 30s, while Ashley Esalonas and Sophia Watkins have been playing well. The girls host Nature Dame Academy at Settlers Crossing in Lunenburg on Thursday. Boys volleyball, the inaugural boys' volleyball team has been growing by leaps and bounds under the coach Brian Leighton and Rebecca Ernst. The Panthers are 2-5 but have played well in every match. The team hosts Bay Path this afternoon at the middle school. Middle school baseball and softball, the teams have been off to solid starts, playing well in their opening three games. Both teams are at Peroni Park today hosting Quavon.
And both won.
And both won, fantastic. In other news, Maddie Davis, Ashley Esalonas, Kaylee Meadows were honored at Woman in Sports Day at Faneuil Hall last Friday. JV softball coach Sarah Ernst also attended. AJ Akarlian, Shandra Ellie Johnson, and Leah Norton attended the Midwatch Leadership Training Event today at Ultimate Obstacles in West Bolston. And that is all for the sports report and the superintendent's report.
I have to say, I love seeing us hosting these big meets. It's so great that after not having a track for so long, our kids are now the host for these big meets. It's great.
It's, the, the campus is bustling. It's great.
Yeah.
Doc, can you get an update, if you get a hint for you for next week, June, on the, the lighting for the middle school?
Sure can.
Thanks.
I know that Mr. Briggs has been on it, but we'll get you an update.
Just an update, yeah.
Thank you, Adam, is there anything else?
That is everything for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. On to one business, we have non-listened, has that, has that changed at all? Our line policy review report?
Sure, so, we completed the H section of the policy. I can tell you that the, this particular section went really well. We didn't really have many changes, with the exception of policy HB, where we're basically putting together the mask version, which focuses on employer rights, and then our Air Shirley version, which we have tailored in a certain manner. Otherwise, everything went okay. We are halfway through section I and we will be meeting, sorry, I'm looking up the next meeting date. Our next meeting is later in May. I will try and get that information over to, to Michelle Town so that it'll be accurately reflected in the meetings, because unfortunately, I can't find it and I'd have to look all the way through my calendar. But that, that's it so far.
So, I, I have one topic, policy. It may not fit in the policy review that you're looking at. So, this has just come up recently and it's, I'm going to get it on my soapbox. But athletic programs, and I'm curious about a policy, I'm seeing it more and more and more in mostly other school systems, because if you look at April vacation that we just had, I was talking to friends who mentioned to me, I think because I'm on the school committee here, they were not able to go on their April vacations because coaches are now requiring athletes to stay home because they can't miss practices or they can't miss a tournament. And I just think it's terrible. So, you know, one family, only half of the family went. One of the, the freshman girl had to miss going to the Bahamas with their family. And we're seeing this in more and more school districts. It has happened in Air. I've known athletes in Air Shirley where coaches had said, if you go off on your vacation, then you're going to be benched when you return. And I just find that unacceptable. Kids and parents get four April vacations for high school. And these are trips that we should be able to remember for the rest of our lives. And I don't think it should be acceptable that coaches can punish kids for going on a vacation, that parents plan, you know, a year ahead of time. So, I don't know where that fits within a policy, I don't even know that it fits within our purview, but it's just.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, that's, that's my soapbox.
I was going to say, we did review some things for athletics, but sometimes they're in multiple sections, so I definitely will keep an eye out for it. And I can also highlight the information for Dorothy to see what their recommendations are for masks, because I'm sure MASK has looked at this policy too and how we can write it out.
I mean, I, I'd love to see a whole bunch of towns start to adopt that policy, because it's getting to be an epidemic, I think. Joyce, did you have something?
If I understood you correctly, I think you referred policies with the, with the elders.
Yeah, that's right. And in fairness, I haven't brought this up to Mr. Kendall at all, or.
Yeah.
Many times that's in the handbook that we approve and not in the policies in general.
It could be, I mean, we can still, we can still look at it. I mean, it's still something, I guess it's worth looking at either way, whether it's the handbook or it's the policies, it's still something that needs to be addressed because you're absolutely right.
Yeah, I don't think kids should be punished for going on a vacation.
Right.
It will be, I mean, certainly within our purview, if we want a standing policy for the district, we certainly have the right to do it.
Right.
It, it's always in the nuts and bolts, because the coaches are still the coaches and then even if they abide by the policy, say that, saying that there will be no repercussions for people going on vacation is just.
Absolutely.
Going to be difficult to do. Not that we shouldn't have the policy anyway, it's just a tough thing to, to put in motion. Worth the discussion clearly.
Just to, you know, to throw it out there as well, that we do participate in several sports that we're co-opt with, so it's, you know, we also want to pay attention to what the other district does. And sometimes if the host isn't our district, we don't, you know, we want to be mindful of the fact that our policy wouldn't control in that situation. So, I know, you know, with hockey, for instance, that's definitely been a message. And, you know, if they don't have a policy in Lunenburg, our kids are still subject to that.
Right, and I'll, I'll just make sure I bring up all of those concerns as we're reviewing it with Dorothy, but I'm, I'm sure there's got to be several different instances where she's probably, they, they probably have some things there, if we don't have something already. I just don't remember off the top of my head.
Same thing with swim.
Yeah.
They go off through the water break.
Right.
They're pretty swimmers.
And unfortunately, a lot of times, and I don't know about swim, but sometimes playoffs fall at that time, so it's tough, you know, it's a tough.
Tough time to lose.
Yeah.
Because it's, I mean, it's only two weeks before regionals and the state tournament, so it's.
Okay.
And, and I wouldn't be saying that coaches can't encourage and say, we need you here and do all of those things. I just don't think there should be punitive action if someone does choose to go to the Bahamas. And they're getting pressure at home that these are precious, you know, things that families sometimes spend enormous amounts of money on, so.
Ultimately, it's the parent that's going to make the call and not the coach, so, you know, it's not the kid's fault.
Well, ultimately, but it, it comes down to the kid, though.
Yeah, but if the kid can't stay home without a family, you know, like if you're a freshman and your parent says you're not staying home by yourself, you know, they don't have a choice in the matter.
But it, and it takes then huge emotional toll on these kids that have to make a choice between telling their coach that they're not going to be there or getting constant arguments with their parents.
Right.
If I bring up the athletic director to see if they can come up with, but really it should be in the handbook, not like in the.
Yeah, sure, we can talk about it later and, and I'll.
Maybe clarify it a little bit?
Yeah, I'll, I'll certainly bring it up with Mr. Kendall and then come back to everybody, let me know what we discussed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Eric?
Nope, I'm all set.
Thank you very much for doing that. Chris is traveling this week, so he couldn't be here. And Ian, you're going to be doing a bank autograph. The next item is Jill Person's notes. I want to thank everybody and Michelle Granger, thank you so much, I wanted to do this publicly for stepping in for me. There was no way that I could fill my duties and I wish I hadn't been in that, but I still have another couple of months to go before I am totally up and out. But, and Michelle has always had a wonderful view, a wonderful thoughtful way of doing things and I certainly appreciate working with her and we are going to miss her a lot. But we've had your phone number, so you know, you might not be in touch. And you can come anytime you want to, we like to, you know. So, this is my last night as chair and we will be organized with a new member from Air starting A17, we need 6:30 in the middle school. And other than that, thank you for thinking of votes for the school committee. And I don't want to say this again because it was really random for Michelle to just have been helping. And I think when I, when I was lucid, not too much, was lucid, and I called and said, yeah, and you exactly like me. So, thanks, Michelle. Thank you very, 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 very much. Any other topics not ready for discussion, not recently anticipated, 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Can we rehab communications?
Yes, we do.
I've got your communications, Rose is Chris.
No, it's me. So, I got it, I'm ready to roll. Oh, you guys got a big list for me on my last one, thanks. Oh, yes, that'll be helpful, that way I don't have to read off my phone. All right, so, on Saturday, May 6th, there is a used book sale where tens of thousands of gently used books of every description for every age will be held at the middle school from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On Monday, May 8th, progress reports are issued for preschool through 12th grade and there is a 90-minute early release where lunch will be served. Dismissal times for the high school and middle school are at 12:50 PM and for the elementary schools at 1:45 PM. Also on Monday, there is the Shirley Annual Town Meeting at 7:15 at the middle school in the auditorium. What time is that at? Is that at 6? It doesn't have a time here.
It says 7:15, I just read it.
Oh, I did, just kidding, guys. On Tuesday, May 9th, the Air Annual Town Election is from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, that's at Airtown Hall. On Wednesday, May 17th, is our next school committee meeting at the middle school at 6:30 PM. On Wednesday, May 17th, the ASRHS Spring Concert is happening also at 6:30 at the high school auditorium. On Sunday, May 21st, the Janus Breznerhan Run for Education is happening and.
Yeah, registration starts at 10:00 AM, events start. Yeah, 10:00 AM.
Thank you.
Here at the high school.
Here at the high school, thank you. So, Monday, May 22nd and Tuesday, May 23rd, there's kindergarten screening at Laura A. White. Please contact, did I say that right? Yeah, I did. Please contact Laura A. White for an appointment, please. And also, on Monday, May 22nd through Wednesday, May 24th, there's kindergarten screening for Page Hilltop. Please contact Page Hilltop for an appointment as well. On Tuesday, May 23rd, is the high school Honor Society Induction Ceremony at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. On Wednesday, the, May 24th, there's the high school academic awards and scholarship night from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the high school auditorium. On May 24th, there also is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council Meeting at 6:30 in the middle school library. On Monday, May 28th, is Memorial Day, so there is no school. And on Tuesday, May 30th, is the last day for seniors. All done.
Please we need to add that Friday at 6 o'clock on June 2nd, 3rd, registration.
Well, that was quick.
Well, there's obviously a lot of stuff going on in May, I just want to say, I'm always disappointed when a school committee meeting falls on a music concert, because kids worked hard for a long time. I never miss music concerts, like, at least with the play, I don't say, the play that The Rock of Ages, it was great to go to something that I knew all the songs. Now, when you listen to the radio, my kids are around, I don't know the song, I can't understand the words, and it's a good thing I can't understand the words probably. But The Rock of Ages performances were, were a great amount of fun. I always support those and I always support the, the music concerts at the high school and the middle school, and it's disappointing that we're, we're meeting and going to miss the spring concert.
Thank you, Eric. We are going to have an executive session pursuant to constitutions of general laws of C30A, S20 common, AM3. We are going to discuss statutory with respect to collective bargaining or litigation as an open meeting may have yet meant to affect our working or litigating of this open meeting. We can then return to open session with the sole purpose of adjournment. So, I would take a vote for, to go into an executive session. This will be a whole call vote. Ms. Town, would you please call the vote?
Second, do we have to do a motion first?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session.
Second.
Ms. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Breznerhan?
Aye.
Ms. Van?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Reshu's?
Bye.
We are returning for executive session. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.